All right, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, welcome to this regular meeting of the Clovis City Commission. Please pray with me. And God, we ask for your favor and your blessing for peace and health and prosperity for every citizen, every home, and all across our community. We ask, Lord, for wisdom this evening as we do the business that is before us. And we ask for your mercy to reign in our community. I ask these things in the name of Jesus, amen. Please join me in honoring our country's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the seat of symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Our meeting is called to order. Ms. Reyes, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Paula?
Mayor Morris?
Here, thank you, Ms. Reyes. Commissioners, next, we have approval of tonight's agenda. We need to remove item three under section 10 of the agenda. Other than that, are there any objections to how the agenda is published? Hearing and seeing no objections, we will adopt the agenda without number three under section 10. And Ms. Reyes, please record a yes vote for each member of the commission. Next is approval of minutes. You have the minutes from the Thursday, August 4th, regular meeting in your packet. In fact, you have a revised copy that was given to each of you prior to the meeting. Are there any objections to the minutes from the August 4th meeting as they are printed? Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the minutes from the August 4th, 2022, regular commission meeting. Next is recognition of visitors. We have a lot of folks who've joined us in the commission chambers this evening. We appreciate you being here. I know you're here for presentations and for maybe some of the agenda items. And we look forward to hearing from you when we reach the point in tonight's agenda that you're here for. We will move now into proclamations, awards, and presentations. And we have several presentations planned this evening. We'll begin with presentation of eagle to fire driver operator Edward Wahado. And for this, we'll call on our fire chief, Chief Nolan, to share with us about this honor. Chief Nolan, thank you for being here.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Eddie, could you and Christina come up? After 20 years, come on.
There we go.
She's not a little bit shy. So Eddie here spent 20 years with us, right to the 2002, July 1 to July 1 of this year. And it is driver operator in our rank structure. Driver operator and then lieutenant and battalion chief. And I tried for about 16 of those years to get him to promote. Perfectly qualified, he would not do that, he was absolutely content. And I do know they're in a hurry to get out tonight to go see some grandkids, South Texas. Dallas. Dallas. And so if I'm lucky here, the mayor may give you that eagle.
Yes, yes, and we can do that quickly as you suggested, especially if you all are needing to go see grandkids, because I know how important that is. But Mr. Wahado, thank you for 20 years of service to the citizens of Clovis. And on behalf of the citizens, thank you for all of your time and talent that you've lent and just the immeasurable impact that you've had over 20 years, thank you.
I always like to share the inscription because it says it. It says here, Edward Wahado, fire driver operator, July 1 to June 28, July 1, 2002 to June 28, 2022. And it says, with the heartfelt thanks of a grateful community, thank you for sharing your time and talent.
Have a safe trip to Dallas and give some advice to the cowboys.
They need all the help they can get.
Next, if I can call on our parks director, Mr. Russell Hooper. We have presentation of certificates of appreciation for the summer 2022 summer youth program.
Powerpoint presentation, which was an excellent job, and she translated all our scribbles down in crayon notes. So I really appreciate that. We did the summer youth program, obviously, for the first time in ever. And I don't know, I think at some point they may have done way back, but it's been a while. We did this through a grant with the New Mexico Economic Development.
Outdoor Equity Grant.
Outdoor Equity Grant Fund, and then with a lot of support from the community through various organizations within the communities and various people within the community. So if y'all would like to roll a little bit through that PowerPoint. Thanks to Vicki, we now know it was the first time in 20 years. This was just some of the stuff, some of the setup that we did. It was obviously at the YRB. Some of the activities that the kids have done. They learned about the environment, they took trips to the zoo, went to Potter Pool, had water play, went to Splash Pad, did arts and crafts. They also had EPCOR and, I'm not even gonna say that one, Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority, I believe. Hey, that was good, because y'all know I can't do CYS. And they came out and gave some presentations, taught the kids a whole bunch. Just different pictures, we got arts, crafts, pottery. We want to thank Albertsons, obviously, for providing all the snacks. So basically, what we did, keep going, you can see, like, see there's some of our zoo pictures where they did the trip to the zoo. They had emergency management come out, Clovis Fire Department came out, talked about fire safety, talked about emergency weather. They had an ice cream social every day from the United Dairy Women, so we want to thank them. We had a lot of new friends. There was a pretty good amount of attendance on that one. We had, I'm trying to think, I think we're about to get to it. The, I wanted to say, I don't remember our total numbers for the whole project, but we had over 100 kids in various things. They averaged around 65. La Casa fed them. So we basically, we got them out there in the mornings, they ate breakfast, then they brought back and they had lunch. It was all their service in the facility. As you can see, our daily participants were averaging anywhere 50, just short of 50. We dropped down a little bit in the last weeks, but it was a lot of kids. Those aren't all the same ones, they rotated in and out, different things like that. So we really did want to thank Albertsons, City of Clovis, obviously. My guys did a lot of work out there. We had some, Tari, basically built the program. Well, Claire and Vicki did most of the work in the background, then Tari came and flipped it over. We had summer youth program workers, we had different people that really chipped in. Kiwanis Club, Eastern New Mexico Water Authority, EPCOR, summer food program, program. We had also the United Dairy Women. We do have some presentations and some plaques to give away, and I know the mayor is really looking forward to that. So we've.
Of course.
As he does every commission meeting. So, one, I want to thank y'all, because y'all supported this too, from back in the beginning. And we really appreciate y'all's support, because we couldn't have done it without permission and without approval. I do have some plaques up here, or certificate to the United Dairy Women, certificate of appreciation, and I'm not sure who is.
Is someone here with United Dairy Women?
Accepting the award?
Commissioner.
I can accept it.
Let's do that.
And it was one of those things where they brought out and the kids have snacks. I mean, it was that simple, and it sounds so simple, but it's something that you look forward to in advance. And you know you get something coming, and yeah.
You said that it was the, and by the way, I just wanted to mention, thank you, Commissioner Paula, for representing the Dairy Women. And you said that they supplied ice cream every day?
Friday.
Every Friday.
Every Friday, oh, I thought, I'm helping with camp next to summer.
It's like me every day, but yeah, the kids just got it on Fridays.
Okay, well, I think the was just amazing. And I know it was a little bit of a, we did get the grant, but we also had to do some budget adjustments to get this done. But I think it's a great investment in kids in our community. And the type of investment that pays dividends that you can't calculate for years and years to come. And so, thanks for running it, and let's recognize the rest of these folks that helped make it possible.
Yes, I also have a certificate of appreciation to the Kiwanis Club. I'm not sure who would be accepting on that order. Good, I'm not the only one in uniform, I appreciate that. Yes, and where would you like?
Commissioner Casaus is on with El De Sano as well.
It's one of the things where, like I said, we did get the grant money, but that covers part of it. It doesn't cover all of it, and all y'all's help was just so greatly appreciated. And the last one will go to Albertsons of Clovis.
Crystal Dominguez is here, I believe, with Albertson. And Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, in the last week or so, we have been advised that the City of Clovis has received another grant for $20,000 for next year's summer youth program through the Outdoor Equity Program.
Great news. Great news and great job getting those grant funds so that we can continue investing in kids in the community. So next, I believe we have a presentation on yard of the month, or actually yard of the summer 2022. Who would like to take the lead on that?
I believe I will.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Paula.
Absolutely. So this is always exciting, in my opinion, because I just appreciate, and I love driving by and kind of looking around and seeing what people do in their yards, because I love to garden. And so I'm always impressed with what other people come up with and how well they take care of their yards. And so to everyone who has done this, I appreciate it, I thank you. And I am very excited to announce the winners of each district. So what I thought I would do is I'll announce the one that I have, and then I'll pass it off to my fellow commissioner for the other award winner, and then I'll announce the commercial winners as well. If that sounds good to everyone?
Sounds great.
Okay, perfect. So I will start with my district, District 4. And the winner, one of the winners in my district is 2309 Wallace, Stephen Watkins. Is he here? Look how pretty that grass is. Love it, okay. Well, he's not here, but I do have his certificate. And Commissioner Bryant, I'll let you announce the other winner.
And our second one for District 4 is Dwight Dudley at 309 Prairie View. Is Mr. Dudley here?
Mr. Dudley isn't here this evening, but Ms. Dudley did come into City Hall this afternoon. She wasn't able to make it this evening, but she was very excited to have won, so.
That's good news.
So I guess let me also add that this year, we also added a ZeroScape award for each district. So I think that's kind of exciting. And so this, the second picture was the ZeroScape award winner. So I'll go ahead and announce the commercial winners, and then I'll pass it to another district. So our first commercial winner is 605 Arizona, the Prairie Lake Vet Clinic. Is anyone here from there? And this commercial ZeroScape award winner is the Citizens Bank of Clovis. I think they did a fantastic job with their artificial turf that they put around their building.
I see Mr., I see the president of the bank, I'm not gonna mention his name, using it as a putting green. Practice putting greens.
Multi-purpose.
Sounds like something he would do.
Okay, I'll pass it off to Commissioner Rowley with your district.
I have Mr. and Ms. Nguyen at 417 Kingston.
They're not here.
Looks good, are Mr. and Mrs. Nguyen here? Good-looking property.
Commissioner Garza, do you want to finish your district?
Actually, Commissioner Porter.
Porter, I'm sorry.
I think he has the.
Hi.
Sorry. Just skipping around.
And for District 2, ZeroScape, we have Aurelius Houston. Is Mr. Houston here?
Mrs. Houston here, yep.
Commissioner Casaus?
And for District 3, we have Bobby and Teresa Sandoval for ZeroScape. 1620 Lower Lane.
First of all, I want to say that my kids are my groundkeepers now, and I have to thank them for such a wonderful job that they do. But I wanted to mention, since this is a yard of the month, I wanted to mention something about my yard. We moved to, we had our house built in the mid-'70s, the early-'70s, I guess. And at that time, Clovis was not as diverse a district on that part of town as it is now. As a matter of fact, I think I was the only Hispanic in that area at the time. So after we'd been there for a few years, I remember Saturday, I was working on my yard, and this car drives by very slowly, and he stops, and he says, hey, you're doing a great job on that yard, you really are. And I said, well, thank you so much. And he says, by the way, he says, can you tell me how much you charge to do the yard? Well, I stopped for a minute, and I said, well, the lady with the house let me sleep with her every once in a while.
I don't know how we follow that. But I'll start with Commissioner Bryant, would you like to announce your other winner?
Yeah, next for District 3 is 825 Purdue, Gary Durazio.
They're not here.
Okay, and I think we are left with District 1, Commissioner Garza.
Yes, we have 411 Remuda, Alana Irwin, and I know they're here.
And Commissioner Jones?
All right, so our other winner from District 1 is 3412 Lou Wallace, Damian Holfick. Damian's not here.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, tomorrow, Ms. Reyes and I believe a couple of the commissioners will be going to each one of these homes and delivering goodie bags and putting out the yard of the month signs, thank you.
Nice, thanks for that. All wonderful-looking properties, thanks to these residents that do such a great job of making their place look wonderful, making Clovis look wonderful. We will move out of presentations and into receipts of petitions and communications. And we have a planned update there this evening from our chief of police, Chief Rice. Chief, thank you for being here this evening and giving us an update on crime statistics within our city. And we certainly appreciate you taking the time to do that, welcome.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me, Mr. Howard, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Some things have been coming up the last couple of months, has been a great concern of all of us. And of course, we've talked about the increase of crime, we're talking about increases of violence, crime, we're talking about the increase of youth crime. And so with these topics of discussion, we decided to go in and start doing some of our statistics and go through our records. And before we get to where we're at, I've got to go back a little bit further. We started looking at all the calls of shots fired throughout town. And I'll be honest, it got to where always just another Clovis, not shots fired. I didn't like that term. I mean, this is our hometown, this is someplace where we live, we're supposed to be able to live, play, walk safely, and have some enjoyment of life. And so I got with my administration team, and we sit down, we came up with a plan to come up with a team. And of course, I'll tell you, I have what I call thunks. I come up with these ideas, and then we sit down as a team, and we start working these things out, and they grow into big and beautiful projects. This project included putting different officers, our detective and a uniform officer in a car, and then a narcotics unit out, and we wanted to start looking at all these areas where the shots were fired coming from. Well, what we found out after Captain Merrill went through the records and found out where all the shootings were, we came up with actually a good time, dates, and locations. So what the officers did, they started concentrating on these locations. And it's amazing, whenever they started doing this, this project went on for five weeks. And they ran into a few situations where they actually were in the area where the shots fired, people were hurt. We had a couple homicides with these units being in that area. So we discovered that the unit had a purpose. So we're trying to expand on that. And of course, tonight, that unit is assigned to the fair because of all the mayhem from last night. You know, we're going to talk a little bit later about misinformation. We're going to talk about how a community can be sparked up to believe anything from what they're being fed all week long. And then they refuse to listen to what the facts are, and we'll go on with that from here. But we went into the. And we'll go on with that from here, but we'll go ahead and do the PowerPoint for right now. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, Clovis Police Department's mission statement is, the Clovis Police Department's mission is to provide professional and ethical police services in partnership with our citizens to identify and solve the problems of crime, to reduce the fear of crime, and prevent social disorder, thereby making Clovis a safer community to live, work, and play in, which you heard me talk about a while ago. We do meet some of the standards of, or I'm sorry, we are audited by the New Mexico standards, and we meet those. Captain Teas has a team that works on these, make sure that we stay compliant with these acts. So that helps us make sure that our work is up to date. And I'm kind of getting concerned, but the, it's not the same slides. Okay, next slide, please. This is how our department is broken down. We have Field Services, which is the Uniform Division, we have 49 officers, currently have six vacancies. The Support Services, which is the Detective Division, has 11 officers signed yet with three vacancies. And of course, civilian staff is our records, our, I'm sorry, our records, our clerks. Administration, that's us, the captains, me, whenever we get a deputy chief, that's the vacancy. And then dispatchers, of course, we all know, those are those people that sit behind the dark room with radios and telephones and tell the officers where the calls are coming from and where to go. The next, please. Okay. And like I said, this is not the same slide program, I don't know what happened, but anyway, we have 23.79 square miles that we're, that we are patrolling. The population is 38,725. So as you can see, when we're fully staffed, if you go to the next slide, please. And when we go to fully staffed, that's only one officer per 789 officers, I mean, people, population that we have out. Not all working at one time. So that number grows to one per 10,000, basically. Our major crime stats for 2018 through this month. The bottom white line is the homicides. And I know that they're hard to see, but it shows you kind of how we're kind of in line. But then we spike on the robberies. If you go to the next slide, okay, 2018, you'll see our homicides start off, one, 19, two, 22, 21, we had five. And this year, up to date, we had five. Our worst year was 2004. We had 13 homicides. I was asked a question about how are we in line with other cities our size? And Captain was working on getting that information today, whenever we had another incident come up. So we don't have those figures, but from what we're able to tell, we're in that line with the population that we have. The sexual assaults, the rapes, as you can see, they're down. Our robberies are down from 23 and 18 to 3 and 22. Aggravated assault is up from 67 to 78. Now, one of the things that you're looking at is 20 and 21 were COVID years. We had a spike in aggravated assaults. Families are stuck together, stuck in the houses. They can't go anywhere, they can't do anything, so they're argumentative. Some of this is what we're figuring is transitioning out now, since we're out of COVID. We feel that some of this is filtered out into the community. They're used to fighting amongst each other, the families and all everybody, to where now, whenever we get into public, we can disagree and have the same discussion in public. Next slide, please. The property crimes are on a decrease. And there's no explanation. It could, I would like to sit here and say, it's because we've done such a wonderful job of teaching people how to lock their doors, lock their cars, put their packages up. But basically, it boils down to people are doing this on their own. They're getting tired of being ripped off. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is, the first one came out. Anyway, I'm sorry, I have to apologize for this. The numbers are still the same. The homicide, I'm sorry. That one is out of my file. And you see in 2018, the burglaries are 386. That's all burglaries. That's commercial, residential, and they're down to 88 so far this year. The larceny and thefts are way down. Motor vehicles theft is way down. Next slide, please. Training. The areas of focus on this is we reviewed in-house training. We were still teaching our in-house training for the new recruits this year or last year, the same they were whenever I started three years ago. The same way that they were five years before that. So again, the administration team and our training officers sit down, and we start talking, what do we need to do? And we decided we need to start updating our training to go with the more modern techniques of training, the more technique holds, the weaponry, the commands, the escalation. So we started working on that. We, the field training officers, we needed new training officers, field training officers. At one time, field training officers was just a point to where we can get an increase in salary, we didn't have to do any work. Well, that changed. We come in, now, in order to be a field training officer, you have to be motivated, you have to be positive, you have to teach the officer patrol tactics and how to handle the public, and how to control yourself, and how to be professional, and how to be courteous. Still working on this. The specialized training, that is in various, all over, we have the drug recognition experts, we have the DWI experts, we have automobile theft, people who've gone to automobile theft training to spy and locate stolen cars. So we're doing specialized training, our crime scenes and domestic violence training. And then our officers investigate, probe areas where the gunshots were. That's what we're talking about a while ago. We're not just working our zones anymore, we're working where the crime is. We're trying to work this area where we are needed, where we need to be seen. And after all, our cars are quite visible, so we should be seen. Next slide. So how did we get there? Community involvement. Get the citizens to understand the importance of reporting criminal events. And I won't start cutting this short, because I know some of you want to go to the fair.
Take your time, Chief.
The way we're doing this, and we've already proved that point just the last five weeks. When we start getting the community involved, and they start talking to us, and start telling us what they see, what they hear, then we can actually shut the things down. I mean, we had one hot zone in our town. At one time, was it 26 or 27 calls, Robbie? 27 calls of this one place. And two of those calls, we only had the people where they would talk to us and tell us what they saw and what they heard. So this created concern. We went in, we worked with the management, we worked with staff, we worked with the people. Now, I'm not going to knock on wood. Last two weeks, we've only had one shot call per weekend. Regretfully, the one Sunday night ended in a death again. But we're knocking these things down. You know, we've been told we weren't proactive, we were told that we were not listening to people, we were told that we didn't care. You know, you out here and you look at these officers that's working with our Clovis Department. We have the Sheriff's Office, we have the MCU, which is made up with the DA's office, their investigators, we have Portalis. We have the Sheriff's Office, we have state police coming in and helping us from time to time on these calls and do these investigations. The other day, they were up over 18 hours. I would like anybody, and challenge anybody, to come up there and tell them they don't care about what's going on in our community. They don't even live here, and they still stay up that long and do the job because we do care. So be aware of the activity in your neighborhood. The patrol investigation procedures, we've talked about how, I just got through covering that, about how we're offering things, we're spending where we need to be. Fake news education, you know, what can I say about that? We've had probably one of the best examples, well, a couple of examples this last week, with the 20 FBI agents and the state police beginning here to run over the city. And I can assure you, the FBI wasn't here, because when they do come here, Robbie has to buy their lunch. And I know when they're here. We don't know what the FBI is doing all the time. But when they do come to town, they come, they talk to us, and they visit with us, and they tell us what's going on. So I want to go ahead and wrap this up and close it. You can show the rest of the slides, or you can just turn it off. But here's what the deal is. Whenever we start feeling this is our town, when we start feeling this is our community, if we start hearing rumors, if we start seeing things, ask questions. I mean, we were talking about the fuel from last night, the fire from last night. You know, we've been hearing all week about the rumor of there's something happening at the fair, there will be a revenge shooting at the fair. We had sheriff's deputies and sheriffs, our units were out there. And first of all, I can't speak for the sheriff, this is in the county, but he does ask us to assist him, so we go out there and we assist him. The state police were there. All these people were there working this thing, and then whenever all this ruckus broke out, and some of you were there, I won't mention names, you can talk about it yourselves if you want to. But you yourself saw what happens when we feed a frenzy. When we start riling people up to the point where they're scared to death, they hear things and do things, and they don't act rationally. And sometimes that includes us, because we have kids and family going out to the fair. But I love it whenever we get there and we start trying to calm people down, and start trying to tell them what's going on. And we're called liars. We're called, we can't be trusted. So whenever you hear these reports, when you hear these remarks, you don't have to sit there and just take them for face value, even from me. When we come before you and we give you information, ask for numbers. We'll give it to you, we'll show it to you. And Mr. Holf will tell you, I hate statistics, because they can be played both ways. That's the reason why when you see my reports, it tells you numbers of increase, numbers of decrease. I don't give you percentages. Because if you go look at the homicide, you know, we've had over 200% increase in homicides. That sounds horrible. Bad enough, we had five. Ask questions, challenge where you get your information from. And then maybe we'll start getting back to the source. Some of the people, we're going to be holding them accountable for what they're doing. If they post on there they saw it, I asked the captain today to go ahead and take screenshots of it and put it with our reports to the DA's office. I wouldn't mind having them have a subpoena to go to the grand jury and have to testify to what they saw and what they heard. That's all I have. I can take questions, or I can sit down and be quiet.
Well, well, Chief, there may be a question or two, so thank you for your report and for hanging on just a minute in case there are questions. But I just want to reiterate my appreciation as a citizen for you and everyone in Clovis Police Department. And certainly as mayor, you have my support, and I believe I've expressed that to you in private, but I'll continue to do so and do that publicly as well, because I stand with you and for you. And I know that these commissioners do as well, and so, you know, we want to continue to look for ways how we can better support you. So I think oftentimes, the question ought to be, what, you know, what do you need from us? And I guess I'll pose that question to you now. What do you need from me and these commissioners?
You're already working on it. We've already talked about what we were needing as far as personnel, we're filling up with staff. Communications is short, and we're working on that, too. The needs are there, Mr. Holf and I have already talked about what the needs are, and they're being addressed. So far, everything we've asked for, we're being listened to, we're not being shut out. And that's where, I was going to say, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I haven't got to talk to all of you lately. And even Mr. Holf, last night, I told him, you have a tougher job than I do. You asked for this position, you don't get paid that much for this position to take what you get. When the times are good, they're great. When they're bad, they're bad. But at least with this reason why you have us on staff, send the people to us, we'll answer the questions, we'll talk to them. There's not one of my staff that will turn people away unless they're untied up on a major call, but they will say, please, come back, and we'll visit with you. We don't turn them away. We're listening, you're listening. And that's like everything else, if we all work together, we will make this happen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Chief?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment. Chief, I know I have reached out to you with questions and with concerns, and a lot of the questions have come from people that have called me, and I didn't know the answer, and so I came to you. And you've been wonderful with your help, with helping me answer the questions so that I can help others. And I can't thank you enough for all the work that you guys have done. And please tell your officers that we stand behind them, we support you all, and we're here to give you whatever you need.
Thank you.
And Chief, I agree 100%. I mean, thank you, and thanks to all your staff and officers for what they do for the city of Clovis and our citizens. But I think it all comes down to what you said just a minute ago, is the community is working together and helping each other to get this all resolved.
Yes, sir.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great report from our Chief. So we can continue in receipts of petitions and communications. For those of you that are here from the public, this is the section in the agenda where you're invited to bring whatever you wish, whether that's a comment, criticism, concern, any of the above, before this commission. And so I'll pause for a moment now to give you that opportunity if there's someone here that has something to bring. Yes, sir, please come forward. We'd like to have you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Leonidas Mastman. I live at 2128 Circlewood Place. Glad to be here. It's actually my second time coming to Clovis. And, you know, for me, you know, from what the Chief said, I think we're all kind of alarmed with regards to the spike in crime. But, you know, a lot of times, people want to talk about problems, but I want to talk about a solution. Because I'm not too aware, but it's almost like 75% of the homicides came from Clovis apartments. So have you ever considered making Clovis apartments a gated community? It's a gated community, you got one way in, one way out. You divide both complexes, people who commit crimes actually think twice when they don't have as many holes to scurry out of, you know? If you don't have the hole of the side walls and all this other stuff, you got one way in, one way out. It'll help the police department to be able to contain things, it'll also help that community contain their own crime within their own community. One way in, one way out. That'll actually bring crime down to a screeching halt in that area. I think it'd be cost-effective, I think it'd also help you don't have to worry about so many police. I said the best thing to do is actually put a unit in the front and the back of Clovis apartments. And I was actually told by citizens in the committee, well, then the cops are going to get shot. Well, that's a problem, that's a very serious problem. I mean, we started out this meeting with something very simple, a prayer and a pledge to allegiance. So that's why I came here to Clovis. But the bottom line is, it's how many people stand on that basic fundamental now. I mean, I get demonized by my own people, because I tell them, if you denounce the flag, Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, why does your life matter? This is where our rights are. So we're going backwards, and Clovis is being impacted unfortunately by social media, just like everybody else is. And a lot of the problems that we're having here is because we're bringing them from other states and other cities and what they're going through. And people don't want to call out nonsense for what it is, truth is demonized, we see it for what it is, strength is demonized. But, you know, I know Clovis is Clovis strong. I like seeing the flags, I like seeing the crosses everywhere that I go. And I do understand it's a slippery slope not saying anything, and it's a slippery slope saying something. So it's a terrible balancing act, but I believe if you get a gated community over there, you'll cut down crime by 50%, I guarantee you. One way in, one way out. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for, thank you for bringing solutions forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have something they'd like to share? Yes, ma'am. Appreciate you coming to speak to us, we would just like to have your name and address stated for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Benetta Hudson, I'm the pastor of the Living Word Church of God. Mayor, Commissioners, hold my address, 2101 East 21st Street.
Thank you.
I came because I was concerned, and I am very grateful, Chief, for the information that you've given us. Because if you pay attention to social media, it would make you believe that people don't care, that our government doesn't care, and that us as residents, we don't care. We don't care if it's not in our neighborhood, that's somebody else's problem. And I know that that's not true. I think one of the main things that I feel that we need to do is that more people need to get involved. You started this meeting saying, you know, we have a lot of people that came out tonight. It's sad that we have to wait till something tragic scares us, that we decide that we want to get involved. And what will happen is, we will get involved for a little bit, and then we will stop getting involved. When I moved to Clovis in 2010, this was a small community, and what amazed me was that there are, at And what amazed me was that there are, at that time, sixty churches here. Sixty churches, and that was in two thousand and ten. Sixty churches and our jail is filled to capacity. We have one recovery program, which is the lighthouse. And yet we have an increased number of drug addiction, which causes a lot of our issues. We're not addressing that. I know that last, recently you guys have approved that, that we'll start addressing mental health issues because we know that is a serious thing. But somehow we've got to get more people involved, whether it's pastors, whether it's just people in the neighborhood. We need to start connecting. We say that we are a, a friendly community, that we need to be a friendly community. We need to make it where the, we feel comfortable going and talking to our law enforcement. We feel comfortable in calling our commissioners and saying, this is a problem in my neighborhood. What do I do? And when all the rhetoric started on Facebook last night, you know, we were fortunate in that we knew people that were there that said, hey, we were there and we can tell you, yes, something happened, but what you're hearing did not happen. So we left it at that. But I know that other people, you get stirred up, your emotions get stirred up and fear creeps in. And all we have to do is we have to put a stop to it. You know, if you're, if our friends are saying things, we need to stop them. Get the facts. If you have questions, then do like what we did tonight. Come and listen to the facts. Listen to the people that are in charge of our community. Be more involved. I am going to make an effort to become more involved so that I know. So it's not just, well, so and so said this, so it must be true. No, let me just, let me hear it for myself and let me be able to speak. So I, I appreciate the privilege it is to come and be able to share my thoughts and what I feel and to thank you all for everything that you do. I thank you that you started this meeting in prayer because that means an awful lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your, appreciate your message and your positivity. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission this evening?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw his hand first. Gentlemen. Ma'am, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jerry Dawson, eighteen seventeen, Johnquill Park Drive. Thank you all, yes, for the prayer, starting out with prayer. Yes, we must acknowledge the Lord and everything that we do. I want to thank our police department. I'm here also offering a solution. I think that we should have a town meeting so that our community can speak with our commissioners and the police department if we want to start bridging the gap in regards to communications. The last few deaths between our young people is too many. We don't want to wait until we start losing ten children, fifteen children, twenty children to really start doing something. One child lost is too many. So I think that we should start bridging that gap and start opening the lines of communications and ask community exactly what do you feel is a problem? Why you cannot communicate with your police department? Why you cannot communicate with your city officials? And then those that are listening must be able to deal with what is heard and not get offended and say, oh, that's not what we're doing. Because understand sometimes when there's a breakdown in communication, the community sees one thing and hears one thing. And those that are in office may hear and see something else. So if you sit down and we have a Q and A type thing, say, okay, this is what we're proposing to do and stick to it. Get the community involved, say, okay, who can help? Sometimes it will take volunteering, like, hey, I have a degree in this. I can volunteer my time to help, you know, families that are dealing with domestic violence or husbands and wives that are going through or children that are going through. Because when people do these acts, it's not because they're wanting to be a thug. We don't know where the breakdown is within themselves or in their home. Nobody at the age when they was born and when they was in kindergarten said, I want to sell drugs when I turned fifteen. Or I want to go and shoot somebody. That's the kind of job that I want to have. Nobody said that when they were in kindergarten or when they were in little schools, but something happened. There was a breakdown and there was something that wasn't addressed. So then here we have the result. So we need to find out what's going on, be able to put ourselves out there and become personal with the people and say, hey, what do you need from us? And stick with it. Like the young lady said, we start for a while and then we fall off. Oh, it's okay now. Well, no. You know, you said the saying that says it takes a village? Well, this village needs to band together. We need to come together. So I think a town meeting would be a good idea so you can really hear from your community in a place, in the gym or so, or neutral place and hear from the community what, how they really feel and then go from there.
Love the idea. Thank you. Great idea. Appreciate that, Mr. Merle. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Daniel Merle. My address is one oh three Akoma Drive here in Clovis, New Mexico. I pastor the Church of the Brethren. And one of the reasons that I'm here is to offer a solution and to ask for your help and your opinion on it. Because one of the reasons that I feel the way I do is because of the last two children that died, I had to bury them. They came to my church. And the one that was killed last Sunday, I'm pretty sure I'm going to have to bury him as well because he had just become a member and started coming faithfully to the church. And as the pastor said, one child is too many. I go on social media and you hear so many different things. I mean, everybody has an opinion and everybody knows what you guys are doing and what you're doing wrong and what the police are doing and what the police are doing wrong. And this is what really happened. No, this is being covered up and all of that. It's too much. And one of the reasons that I see that this is occurring is because nobody knows the facts, as was, as was said. We have all kinds of ideas of what will help and how do we change this? But the bottom line is nothing will change until people truly care. The first step in making a change is helping people to care. Because when a tragedy occurs, it brings everybody together. We saw that in COVID. We saw that at the library shooting. We were Clovis strong. For how long? Until it passed. The same thing that we're seeing with these killings and these shootings. It's almost as if people are becoming immune to it because things are happening so often. And I tell people in the church that it's not just here. It's everywhere. But it's being blown up here due to sometimes social media and hearsay. My solution is let's start making people care. How do you make people care? You bring it to the, their front door. They no longer sympathize, but you bring it to them in a way that they have to empathize. I was a car salesman. Also wasn't always a pastor. When people are emotionally engulfed in something, you're more likely to get a response. I said that because the way that I see making people care, I brought it up to Hoseafida and a few others, is the Lord's giving me a gift and a talent. It's right there. I would like to be able to come to the commissioners and get your standpoint on things so that the community is not just going off a hearsay. Oh, Mike Morris doesn't care. He doesn't listen to anything. Well, like the sister said, you guys see it from one area, the public sees it from another. Let's bridge the gap. I want to go and speak to the families of those who have lost loved ones and put together a documentary so that the kids will see that this violence that they're committing, it hurts both sides. I don't want it to be one side, just the ones that were victims, but also the perpetrators' families. But I would also like to get the police chief's view, police chief's view on it. Some of the officers' takes on it. The devastation. And when you put it in people's faces, then they begin to empathize. It begins to become personal. And then they begin to care. We're saying, thank you, there's a lot of people here that came. No, it's not. This is not a lot of people. Look at all of the empty chairs. But you go on Facebook and you got thousands of people that can tell you what they think we should do. But they're not, they don't, I mean, they care for the moment. Oh, we give you our prayers and this, that and the other. But when we put it right in your face, now let's make you believe, let's let you see what it feels like when it's your child. Let's let you, let's let you find out what it's like when it's your husband that's out there defending the community, putting his life on the line. And then he's being told that he's not doing a job when this part of the community won't help him do the job that they should be doing as productive citizens. So my question is, does that sound feasible? Is it something that I could get help with you guys from so that we can begin to cause people to care?
Pastor, you, I, I love what you're talking about. And, you know, we've got to get people to care. If there, if, if there's going to be change, it's, it's going to be, it's going to start in homes. But for that to happen, it first has to start in hearts, right? All across our community. And, and I know your heart. You and I have been acquainted for, for some years. So I know your heart and I, and I know that you have your videography, the business and, and you have a desire to, to use that, that skill and that talent. Are you simply asking if you can interview me or these commissioners? Or what, what is your ask?
Okay, this, my, my, the big ask is helping me to help people see the big picture. So that we can bridge the gap and we can begin to make people care.
I tell you, I tell you what, you know, and, you know, I, I felt like you were making fun of me a little bit about thanking people for, people for being here, for so many people being here. But you got to understand that in my, in my role, I have to intentionally be positive. I have to be, I have to intentionally be positive. And so I agree with you. There, it is, it is depressing how few people pay attention to the facts and what's actually going on with our city. However, I don't want to take that out on the people that show up to a meeting, if, even if it's a handful. I want them to know how much I appreciate their, their interest, right? So I would say your passion, your desire to help people care, you being successful in, 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 in that mission does not hinge on me, you know, giving you a...
Would you like to redact that and try again?
What, what, where, where I wanted to go is, yeah, we would, I mean, I would, I would love, I'm not going to speak for everyone. I would love to, to participate. But what we could really use is someone as passionate as you encouraging your congregation to get plugged in. Dan, the information is all there. Any citizen just needs to care this much. And it's all there. The paper does a great job of covering the, it's on the website. We put information out on social media and all of these places. And so I don't think that creating, I don't want to squash your idea and I actually want to help you with it.
You can't.
But my, but my, but my, my, my point is, and I hope you understand where I'm coming from, is that, that we, the, the information is all there easily for someone that cares this much, that wants to go get it. So what we need instead of a new tool to, to get someone excited, we, we've, we've got to have people in their heart decide they want to be in, involved and informed citizens, right? And, and maybe, maybe what you're talking about does that and I want to help you with that. But, but I just want us to understand, we all need to understand that, that, that a new, that a new tool may not be it. There has to be a heart change on the part of citizens.
Now, can I say something?
Absolutely, you can.
Number one,
I, you know what?
You took it personal when I wasn't referring to you. Actually, someone else said it. I didn't know that you had said that. You took that personal, um, saying my passion.
Saying that in jest with you. I, I wasn't actually offended.
All right. And then, then secondly, as far as squashing or, or, or killing my idea, it's not going to happen because the Lord put it in my heart. Then you said, the second thing that you said that I disagree with, or I don't disagree with, but you said, the information is there. All people have to do is care a little bit. And that's what I'm telling you, people don't care. I, we want to get people to care. And I believe that any means that's necessary, we should try to expound on to get, get people to care. You know, I wasn't making fun, but I'm going to be honest with you. To me, and I'm not taking anything from any of the people that's here, because you do care, you showed up. But there should be a lot more that showed up.
I hope you understood. That's what I meant too. But you don't, you don't, you don't criticize the people that come.
But that wasn't criticism. I was just stating a fact.
Dan, you and I are friends and you know my heart and I, I have, I want to, I want to help you with whatever you would, you would like help with. I, I did, I should have thought about it before I gave a pastor the, the floor.
Well, but see, you're trying to make light of it. And all I want to say is I'm going to do it one way or another, but I believe that that is a su- solution. Before we do all of these other things that we've been trying to do that doesn't work, let's try a different approach. Let's, that's all I'm saying, is let's just try a different approach because I'm going to try that different approach.
Well, look, you're a videographer and you're, and you can just do that. And so I, I don't think any of these commissioners or anybody is going to ignore your phone call. So, so give me a shout. Let's, let's talk.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Merle, Mr. Merle. I, I'd like to say something, if you don't mind. I see your heart and I appreciate your perspective. I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. I love that you have a fire and a passion and that you want to start making a difference. And so I'm going to tell you for me that I'm grateful to you for that fire and that passion. And I believe that the other commissioners are too. I don't want you to walk away from this thinking that we are in opposition of that. I personally am not in opposition to your mission. I think that you're, I think your heart is right. I think you're going in the right direction. It is a huge mystery how to get people to care. And any effort in that direction, it can't hurt, I don't think. And so I think mayor is right. I don't think there's a commissioner up here that won't answer your call. I just, I asked it if you call and I can't get to your phone call, please leave me a message. I promise you, I'll call you back. Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you. Anyone else have something to bring before the commissioner? Yes, please. You know the drill. Name and address, please.
Hello, Roald Roderick is the third. I am at nine oh five Hole Street. I know many of you here. I just want to wholeheartedly thank each and every one of you for your service. You guys, a lot of people, as a lot of the previous speakers were saying, they see it from the, the, you know, private citizen's side of view, not from the public person or the person who is volunteering and out there hitting the pavements side of you. And I know that each and every one of you, being a commissioner and city official, you guys hit the ground running. You guys are always on your phones. You guys are always talking to people. You guys are always getting calls, texts, emails, you know? And I was in their spot before, you know? I've just recently started working with government and I see just the stark contrast of the different types of views. Now, what a lot of people here don't understand is that they have to be the change. They have to want the change. I know that each and every one of you sitting here has that spark and wanted to be that change. And that's why you ran for your office. And that's why you're in the positions of city administration that you are. And a lot of people have the stigma growing up, don't trust the government. The government is evil. The government is, you know, they're corrupt. And just like every other government in history, yes, that's true for some people who are given and granted God, God given power to be in positions of power. But then there are the ones, as I see right in front of me, who do care, who do go and volunteer, who do try and bridge the gap, who do try and do everything that they possibly can to see their community thrive and flourish. So that being said, to each and every one out here in the audience, I thank you all for coming because this actually is quite a bit of attendance. If, for anyone who, who has attended a city commission meeting. So I do thank you all. This is the first step. But it also takes you guys being the seed and telling your daughters and your sons and your cousins and aunts and uncles. But it also takes you guys being the seed and telling your daughters and your sons and your cousins and aunts and uncles, "Hey, you don't, you don't like what's going on in the city? You don't like what's going on in the neighborhood? You don't like what's going on, you know, down the block? You don't like what's going on next door? Stand up. Stand up and be counted. Stand up, be counted, come with solutions and get in there." So I thank you all once again.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner, please.
Just based on what Roald just said and what the pastor was talking about, I, if I had a ma- if I had a Band-Aid to fix this, I would. I feel like we all would. If there was something quick and easy, or not even quick, but just one solution to fix it, everybody in here would vote for that. The problem is so far beyond that. The problem, the solution to the, the problems that we're facing today s- can only start in our heart and, in our homes and taking care of what is in our home first, before we do anything else. And I think we all need to decide that tomorrow we're gonna wake up and be a better person than we were today. A better spouse, a better employee, a better sibling, a better child. And in, until we get out and think of someone other than ourselves, we're not going to change this situation. And we've got to wake up tomorrow and, and be the better person and help our neighbor and go out in our front yard and clean it up and go out in our alley and pick up the trash that may or may not belong to us. And when we start making these small, simple changes that you can do tomorrow morning, it may not fix the world, but it'll fix a small part and small things build on each other and make this world a better place and make this town a better place. Because I know Clovis is a wonderful place. I've raised my four children here. My oldest has moved back here. I'm proud of this community. And I want other people to find the pride that this community, I know everyone has. So just be a better person than you were yesterday. And I think we'll move in the right direction. And we as the city, I feel, are doing everything in our power to do the things that we can physically do or financially do. And so I want you to be assured that we, we see the problems. We absolutely see the problems. But we need your help. You are the other ninety-nine percent of this community and we cannot do it alone. The, the nine of us here have so little power. We really do. And we need the help of the other ninety-nine percent to, to move forward. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Paula. Thank you for that. Yes, sir. Thanks for being here. Uh, let us have your name and address for the record, please.
Alrighty. Uh, my name is Javier Salazar Macera. I live at one oh eight Yale Street. Alright, um, I'm here to kinda offer a solution and also a thought that I want y'all to keep in y'all heads. So, one thing that breeds the type of violence and crime that we have in our cities is poverty and absence. So with our poverty levels going up as they are, just like our inflation is going up, also being able to afford housing is going up. So no matter if our country keeps on putting more money into our pockets, they're also taking more money out of our pockets. I remember when a dollar could buy you over a gallon of gas. And now a dollar is worthless. I pay over one-third of my check to my rent, which most people that rent does. But one-third of your paycheck a month in rent does not help you succeed in life. Especially if you're a single parent or even have two parents in the home, or three or four. One-third of your rent is coming from your paycheck, but that's not gonna pay your bills, pay for your car, pay to go back and forth, your maintenance on your vehicle and get to work. And then also with the school schedules being from eight to five, or eight to three, that makes it hard on a lot of our citizens to find a job and that can equate for those hours that our kids are at school and be there. A lot of people work overnight so they could get the overnight differential and pick, pick up doubles and then so they can make a little bit more. But it also hurts us because we are absent from our family, from our sons, from our daughters, from our nieces, our nephews, our cousins, our grandkids that are there alone at home. So they get to get taught by other role models that they look up to. They want things. They want the, the new Jordans. They want the new iPhones and all of that. They want the nice cars to go to high school. But then they get made fun of at school. And this is what happens with poverty and absence involved. So is this the right platform or the right people I'm talking to that could do something with our community to affect the change in poverty? And also inflation that is going on, not in our pockets, going into our pockets, but coming out. Because also I have talked to many a people that seen that their electricity bill just jumps up out of nowhere. I know I've been a victim of that and had to call them and confront them on that to argue it back down to where it usually is. Even though I didn't use that much electricity. And then so, that's just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, pre- pre- I appreciate your, your, your comments. I know, I know everyone does. You know, one of the, one of my focuses as mayor and, and, and a long time focus of, of this commission has been, uh, economic development, job creation, right? Uh, because we want our citizens to have, uh, great job opportunities, you know, uh, so that, so that, so that we aren't struggling in the cycle that you're talking about, uh, and staying behind on things. And so, you know, that is, I mean, that, yeah, and to an extent, you're talking to the right, the right body because we, because we are doing that work. We're doing the work of economic development in order to, to, to create more good jobs, more good job opportunities for the citizens of Clovis. And, um, and, you know, so when we think about what, what is within our realm of control, uh, it, it's that. I mean, that's a, that's a tough business. But, uh, we, we're, we're doing that work and, and, and trying very hard to, to increase the job opportunities for citizens. Now, uh, the inflation that's taking place is, is not, you know, we're not, you know, we're not setting rates and, and things like that and, and, and affecting that. But, uh, you know, I love your heart and I love where you're coming from and, and, uh, and, and the message that you bring here. I'd love to have conversation with you, you know, offline, if, if we could, you know, get together somehow and, and just talk. Uh, I'd, I'd love to visit with you more, but thank you for bringing this.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to share this evening?
I wouldn't mind sharing, but I don't want to be on camera.
And Doc, and Dr. Yancy? Doc, Dr. Yancy, while, uh, Dan Merle's camera is off, we are online and, and so, okay, alright, alright.
Hi, my name is Mr. Gloria Yancy. I'm at thirteen twenty-five Stratford Lane here in Clovis. I, I would just like to share something with you guys. I'm from California. The Bay Area, California. When I came here, I came here to work in the community as I did in California. I'm a community person. There is no place here in Clovis, in the community, that I can't go and talk to somebody. I would love to see that happen to so many of us, that we can just go into the community. What we did in our community, I was in the high crime area and I purchased two drug houses. And I used both of those drug houses. I even had to evict the drug dealers. And I've worked with them and we worked together as a team. But you have to get into it in order to do something about it. You can't work from the outside and think you're gonna be able to reach the end, those that are inside. You have to get in. You have to really and truly be a part of it. I sold my home in a hilly area and moved into a drug area so that I can be able to reach those that needed to be reached. I'm sure none of you guys would like to, to that. But it, it's a way to take over your area. If I was a commissioner, my area, I don't care what area it is, if I was a commissioner, my area would be taken over with leaders. I would have leaders in my area as we did in California. We had leaders every five blocks. There was a leader in that community that was able to work in that community. So, solution is organize leaders. Leaders in the community. You'd be surprised how far you can go with leaders in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Yancy. Appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tim, commissioners, let's, um, move on, uh, to our consent agenda this evening. As you know, the item is placed, uh, on the agenda so that you can approve or acknowledge, uh, many items with one motion. If any, uh, one does not meet with approval, uh, with your approval, or if a citizen were to request it, we would pull it out and hear it under the regular agenda. You have a sixteen item consent agenda this evening. The first is the motion to place the sixteenth is the, uh, motion to approve or acknowledge all of the items. I'll read two through fifteen. Item two is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two one seven five dash twenty twenty-two, changing an RS seven to an RS seven carport overlay. Address of said zone change is one twenty-seven Summer Court. Item three, request for approval of ordinance number two one seven six dash twenty twenty-two, changing an RS seven to a RM at twenty-three seventeen through twenty-three twenty-one East Twenty-first Street, lots one and two, block two of the Soul Elomas subdivision, Clovis, New Mexico. Item four, request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two one seven seven dash twenty twenty-two, changing an RS seven to an RS seven carport overlay. Address of said zone change is two sixteen Ruth. Item five, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one four five dash twenty twenty-two to submit an application for financial assistance to the reuse pipeline, or for the reuse pipeline project to the New Mexico Water Trust Board and accept grant funds and loan when awarded. Item six, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one four seven dash twenty twenty-two, granting approval of the replat of tract three of the Gwen Acres subdivision, Clovis, New Mexico, Curry County. Item seven, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one four eight dash twenty twenty-two, granting approval of the second amended replat of lots one and two of the amended plat for the North Plains Small Sub- Subdivision in Clovis. Item eight, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one four nine dash twenty twenty-two, granting approval of the replat of unit eight of the Overland Park subdivision in the city of Clovis, Curry County. Item nine, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one five zero dash twenty twenty-two, granting approval of conditional use of a solar farm in a residential district at thirteen hundred Kimberly, attractive land in the southeast quarter, section twenty, township two north, range thirty-six east. Item ten, request for approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Clovis and the Transportation Security Administration. Item eleven, request for approval to operate and use agreement between the city of Clovis and the Food Bank of Eastern New Mexico for a food security grant. Item twelve, request for approval of addendum two to the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between the city of Clovis and New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. Item thirteen, request for approval to apply for and accept if awarded the New Mexico Regional Recreation Center's Quality of Life Grant for Planning, Design, and Construction of the Hillcrest Park Zoo. Item fourteen, request for approval to, approval of updated roadway prioritization list. Item fifteen, request for approval to appoint, excuse me, request for approval of appointment of Clovis resident representatives to serve on the Revenue Review Committee. That is your consent agenda. Is there a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote? Motion for approval to place the items on the consent agenda from Commissioner Casaus, second from Commissioner David Bryant. Uh, commissioners, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I need, uh, Commissioner Porter, I need your vote because your system isn't working.
Yes.
So we have a yes from Commissioner Porter. And are we gonna, yep, okay, so it is a unanimous vote. The items have been placed. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items. Motion to approve or acknowledge all items from Commissioner David Bryant, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Porter, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And by a vote of eight to zero, the motion is carried. Thank you. We are on to new business where we have two items. This evening, the first is request for approval of use agreement between the city of Clovis and Clovis Municipal Schools for city-owned athletic and sporting facilities and to advise.
We're missing that.
There.
You missed section ten.
I missed a whole section. See, guys, I was trying. Alright. I got it. Thank you. I was making sure you're all paying attention. And you passed. Good job. Alright. So, we are looking at next introduction and adoption of resolutions and ordinances where we have five items now, uh, this evening. And the first is request for approval of introduction of an ordinance approving the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority twenty twenty-two financial plan and authorizing the delegating ordinance for a water project fund loan grant agreement in the amount of fourteen million, five hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, including a loan amount of one million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, fifty-two dollars and the grant amount of thirteen million, fifty-nine thousand, four seventy among the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority and its members and the New Mexico Finance Authority for loan grant number WPF fifty-six sixty-seven. And, um, commissioners, uh, this is a, um, familiar practice for those of you that, uh, have been on the commission for some time. Uh, the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority, of which we are the largest member, typically, uh, not typically, year in, year out, each cycle applies to the New Mexico Water Trust Board to receive funding for, uh, for the project. And in fact, that is, that is the primary way that the, the state of New Mexico has satisfied their fifteen percent match, uh, for this project. And, uh, when the water authority is applying for these water trust board funds, part of the readiness to proceed, part of the process, uh, for, for this is an, an ordinance, uh, from the city of Clovis because of the amount, uh, that, that we are dealing with because we're such a large member and a resolution from each of the other members essentially, uh, guaranteeing the loan portion, okay? So it's a, it's a loan grant agreement or a groan. So, so back to the description that I read to you, uh, thirteen million plus of the fourteen and a half million go, goes to the water authority by way of grant, okay? But the water authority is taking on one point four, five, uh, million in loan with this loan grant agreement. So you're passing, uh, you're passing this ordinance and, and, or introducing this ordinance, uh, essentially guarantees the city of Clovis's portion of that loan as the member of the, of the Water Utility Authority. Are there any questions or concerns about that? I could go, I could go further if you like. I could go, I could go further if you like.
I think, Mayor, for the, the public's sake, I just want to make sure that the public understands that we're not deciding on how we're paying for that. We are just agreeing to pay.
I, I think that's great. And especially, Commissioner Porter, since we have had a lot of discussion about the city's strategy for, for funding our share of the, the pipeline project. What we're discussing here this evening is really the business of the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. So this, this loan grant agreement is, is being made, was applied for by the Water Utility Authority and is being made to the Water Utility Authority. State law and, and the Water Trust Board simply asks or requires that we, that all of the members would guarantee their portion of the loan piece. And, and so that's why, that's why we're here. This, this has nothing to do with the other work that we've been doing lately pertaining to the city's portion of the pipeline funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good point. Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Mayor Protem Bryant, second from Commissioner George Jones. Is there any further debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, what is before you is the approval of adoption of ordinance number, no, excuse me. I'm, I'm gonna have to, what is before you is approval of introduction of this ordinance pertaining to the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority and this water trust board funding. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Porter, can I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. You're being put on the spot tonight because your system is down. We have a unanimous vote and the motion is carried. Thank you. And I'll try very hard to stay in the correct part of the agenda. Item, item two, under introduction of, and adoption of resolutions and ordinances, item two is request for approval of adoption of a, of resolution number three one four six dash twenty twenty-two, adopting the Senior Citizens Local Infrastructure and Capital Improvements Plan for the years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. And I don't see Ms. Rigg in here, so Ms. Burrows, are you advising?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Aging and Long-Term Services Department has their own infrastructure and capital improvement plan. At the last commission meeting, you approved the ICIP for the rest of the city of Clovis and indeed, the two items that are on the ALTSD, ICIP were a, a part of the ICIP that you approved at the last meeting. And so these are just before you this evening for action, please, so that we can submit them to Aging and Long-Term Services. So the senior center is seeking for vehicles for the senior center for three hundred thousand dollars. And then they are looking for the next phase of the senior facility.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate that. Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I think her explanation was, was great. It sounds like this is a formality that we need to give senior services so they, they can, you know, stay in good standing with Aging and Long-Term Services. Any questions or comments?
I'm over approval.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Jones. Unless there's any further debate, which I don't see any, Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Porter.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. And we have a unanimous vote, eight to zero, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next, we're on to the previous, before we change this. So it's the third item under this section. And it is request for approval of adoption of resolution number three one five one dash twenty twenty-two pertaining to a ruined, damaged, or dilapidated building and authorizing abatement by demolition of such building and related debris within the city of Clovis. So what we have here, and before I turn it over to the city attorney, Mr. Morris, but what we have here is this item, as well as the next two, are, are the, the same action that, that's before you, but each pertaining to a different property that, that is of concern of, on the part of building safety. So, Mr. Morris, would you like to tell us about these so that we can maybe take action in one motion on all three of these?
Sure, gladly. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. So as you mentioned, Department of Building Safety has earmarked three properties for tonight's meeting. The first one is a residential, single-family home located at twenty-nine oh five Smith. Unfortunately, the property owner, Diana Nelson, passed away in the home about a year ago. And it's, it's in really bad shape. Unlike a lot of the other properties that we slate for demolition, this one structurally is intact, but the interior is in such a condition that it's not feasible that it can really be repaired. In fact, if you stand, you know, I'm told up to thirty or forty feet from the home, you can actually smell the inside of the home. And so it's in really bad shape. The decedent left two surviving heirs. They're both sisters that I've been talking to about working through this process. And we are, regardless of what the commission does on, on this property this evening, I'm working with a neighbor on Smith Street named Fabian Martinez, who would like to take the home over and see if he can rehabilitate it before we demo it. And so, they unfortunately never did anything with Ms. Nelson's estate when she passed away. So it's a lot of paperwork we have to do to make that happen. But they're willing to transfer the property to a neighbor. The neighbor is willing to do the work and has the resources to do the work to fix it up. So, we would like to slate this one for condemnation. Everybody has agreed to that. In fact, the, the two surviving heirs have requested that we condemn it. But we are going to hold off on demolition till we can see if we can work that one out. The pictures are start on packet page, I believe, two oh nine. And I think kind of speak for themselves. They mostly show the interior disarray and damage to the home. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on twenty-nine oh five Smith.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions on this one?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Martinez is here, and I think he would like to make a comment or two pertaining to this particular piece of property.
Oh, thanks, Mayor Protem. Good evening. I understand we have Mr. Martinez, but would you please introduce yourself?
I'm Carolyn Pruitt, I'm Diana Nelson's sister.
Oh, okay. Thank you for being here.
Pull the microphone down just a little bit. Here we go.
My sister had some issues. I tried very hard, me and a friend, to get her help. We had called Adult Protective Services.
Do you want to come up, do you want to come up as well?
Lori Hicks, thirty-seventh, Teen Smith.
Welcome, thank you.
I've lived up the street from her for years. And we knew there was a problem when I'm out walking my dogs. And you can smell the house from the middle of the street. So, we got together and we called Adult Protection Services. Then we called the city. And the city said they couldn't really do anything. They in turn called the Animal Control, who at that time removed forty-eight animals, forty-eight animals out of the home. But yet, they removed these animals, but never told the police or anyone the condition that this home was in at that time. Because we were trying to get her help. Probably about twelve years ago, we were trying to get her help to get out of that. And I wrote a letter to Joe Thomas at that time. And he responded back to me that just because what I find aesthetically pleasing doesn't mean, it was just a bunch of garbage. So, I don't know the point of me being here, other than we did try to get help from the city or anybody that would help us with these pictures that you see in front of you. And we got help from nobody.
My, my father bought this house when my parents got married. And they brought all his kids home there. And when my sister passed, her daughter lived with her. And she lay there deceased on the floor in this trash for days before my niece even came forward to say she was dead. So, I guess part of my question is, and I know this has nothing to do with property, but I don't understand why my niece got to walk away from this.
Well, as, as awful as that sounds and as sad as that is, I don't have an answer for you on, on that. Ma'am, is it?
My whole family would like to give this property to Mr. Martinez to, to fix.
And that's what I, I, thank you. I was wondering if, if you were.
I talked to her daughters and I've talked to my other sister in Georgia. And we're all in agreement that we, we can't, I can't afford it.
But everyone agrees that condemnation is, it would be the appropriate action this evening?
Just trying to save the city some money because it would cost you all.
Okay.
To get that leveled out and everything. And if I can make it into a home, I've remodeled the one next door to me. I bought it, remodeled it because it was trash. This one and then one over on Duckworth. All these properties, these renters, you know, the landlords, don't keep their houses up. And that whole neighborhood's starting to look like trash. I've lived there. I moved there when I was three, bought the house for almost fifty years.
He, he does amazing work. He could, he could make it amazing.
Could you give us some kind of an idea as to, how long do you think it would take to renovate this house? And maybe possibly get started on with the process?
As soon as I do a title search, as long as the city's on board, I'll go ahead and start putting money into it. I'll do a title search, make sure there's no loans or anything. If there is any loans on it or whatever, depending on what the loan is for or what. Because I can't take on no forty, fifty thousand dollars and then still do something with the house. You know, because I'm planning on probably putting eighty thousand dollars into this house, if not more. So, it would take me probably about six months, start to finish.
Well, it, it certainly helps to understand that, that, that this is your wish and, and that condemnation or condemnation would, would, would move us in the direction that you get to explore if you are going to remodel it or, or what have you. So, thank you.
We moved there, like I said, when I was three. They already lived across the street. I've known them my whole life. You know, I helped their dad and their mom and, you know, even their sister before she passed. But.
Yeah, yeah. Well, is there anything else you'd share with us or have us know on this?
I don't know. It's just, I just hope he can, the job can grant that to him. And then it won't be torn down because it means a lot.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Appreciate you all being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Mayor, I have a question. And, and, and Mr. Morris, you may be able to help me understand this. Does it have, does, do we have to condemn the building first in order to, for Mr. Martinez to take possession of the property?
No, sir. We could actually not condemn it and let him go through the process. But I was told by Ms. Pruitt, the other heir, I can't remember her last name, her first name was Charlotte, and that Mr. Martinez, everybody's desire is if something falls through, for example, if there's a loan on the property that we don't know about and Mr. Martinez can't buy it or, or there's something with the state paperwork that falls through, it's my understanding, everybody wants us to demo the house unless Mr. Martinez is willing to take it over. And it sounds like he's the only person that is willing to take it over.
Okay, so.
We need to approve this tonight.
We need to approve the.
My request is to approve it with the understanding that we're going to give Mr. Martinez ample time.
Right.
As long as he still wants to go forward and take it over. Because we can always come back to the commission if, if he doesn't do that. But again, I, I believe there's, there's been repeated requests by Ms. Pruitt to let's hurry up and, and demo this and take some action on it, so.
Yeah, appreciate that, Mr. Morris. And your question is a good one, Commissioner Porter. I, I guess, I would just remind us all that when, when you pass this type of resolution, the resolution goes to the property owner and then they have fifteen days in which to articulate a plan with the property. If they fail to do that, then the city would demo it. It sounds like we're going to get that plan. It's already there. And, and Mr. Martinez will have the opportunity to explore if he's actually, actually going to be able to remodel it.
Thank you.
I think, yep.
I make a motion to approve with.
Why don't we, if it's all right, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the, yeah, we'll, yeah. Yeah, let's, let's talk about, let's talk about them all in, in, in one motion. Now, if for some reason we need to deal with one at a time, we, we sure can. Would you like to tell us about four nineteen Ash?
Sure. Four nineteen Ash, the owner of four nineteen Ash is Tim Pruitt. Again, that's another property that Building Safety has flagged as being dilapidated to the point that it's incapable of repair. I believe the photographs of that one begin on packet page two nineteen. And you can see that the exterior walls are falling down. There's no doors, windows. The flooring has been kind of ripped up. The ceiling is in, is in, basically looks to me to be completely unreparable. And so, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions on four nineteen Ash? Okay, tell us about twelve twenty-nine Purdue.
Last property is twelve twenty-nine Purdue. The property owner is Gordon Pierce. And those pictures begin on packet page two twenty-eight. This one has been the subject of a fire, obviously, and is completely incapable of any sort of repair. And to be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Unless there are any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve resolutions or approve adoption of resolutions thirty-one fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two through thirty-one fifty-three dash twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Motion for approval of the three resolutions from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. And Commissioner Porter, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. And we have a unanimous vote. The motion is carried. Thank you. Now, where I was trying to get earlier, we're at new business. Thanks, thanks for all the grace you give me every meeting, guys. Thank you. New, new business, two items. Request for, first is request for approval of use agreement between the city of Clovis and Clovis Municipal Schools for city-owned athletic and sporting facilities. Mr. Hooper, are you going to share with us on this? Okay. Well, we appreciate you being here to advise on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk. We started this process, I want to say, a year ago. We started looking at the usage fees that, for, for some of our facilities that Clovis Municipal Schools is using. And then we were trying to look at, coming up with a fair and equitable, equitable way to set that up. Hopefully y'all have that in the packet. Unfortunately, I don't have the number of the page like. But we, we kind of set up, they're using Mike Harris Field, they're using Bob Spencer Field at different times of the year. They're using our golf course. And then, of course, the aquatic facility. And so we just kind of came up with a thing. We discussed back and forth with them of what, what was fair for both of us. Obviously, we know there's no way we're making a profit off anything, but we are trying to recoup some of our losses and some of our expenses. So that's kind of the way we set it up. It's a two, three-year agreement with the possibility to renew. I believe we've got everybody signed off on it. We just asking your permission to final stamp it.
Appreciate that, Mr. Hooper. And so this, this was worked on in conjunction with CMS? I mean, there was discussion back and forth?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
We discussed it back and forth between us, between, from a legal point of view. I think they made me rewrite it three or four times and then Claire corrected all my mistakes. And then we passed it along.
It's good. Sounds like it's been checked. Eyes dotted and Ts crossed. Yeah, Mr. Ho.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, we have never had a use agreement with the schools in the past. There had been some agreements in place to where if they purchased some lockers, they could utilize those lockers. And so this is just kind of formalizing responsibilities of both parties. And so it's definitely something that we've needed to have in place. And the schools recognize the benefits of them being able to utilize city-owned facilities versus them having to construct all these facilities on their own. Some of them, of course, they couldn't construct, for example, a golf course. But they do recognize the benefits that, that, that they are receiving out of utilizing our facilities themselves. So, as Mr. Hooper said, we started working on this initially with Mr. King as well as Ms. Russell with the schools. And now, continuous conversations in working with Mr. Jay Brady and Mr. Lonnie Baca, the athletic director. And so, they, they do agree, as you can already tell, that Mr. Brady's signed this document. The schools have already approved and signed off on it. And so, like Russell said, just tried to find something that's equitable for both parties and understand who's responsible for what. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ho. Looks like it covers the, the different facilities versus insurance requirements and, and, and those types of things. Mayor Protem, Commissioners, questions?
I'm over approval.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Casaus. Any further discussion or debate on this item? Hearing and seeing none, Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous, the motion is unanimous. And the vote is unanimous, the motion is carried, thank you, and Mr. Hooper isn't going anywhere, because, uh, item two under New Business is request for approval to create, organize, run, and, uh, charge for sports leagues at Roy Walker Gym, Mr. Hooper?
Uh, yes, um, we've, I think we've gotten some direction from y'all that we would like to do more, provide more things for the kids, more opportunities, uh, discussing with Parks and Recreation Board, we talked about how we need to structure some of our things. Uh, basically, we're asking for permission to start exploring, start creating, um, there are no leagues run out of Roy Walker Gym at this time, so, first, we gotta explore the opportunity, we gotta put out some feelers and find out, hey, how many kids want to play basketball this fall, do some things like that, are we gonna have any volunteer coaches? So we want to start exploring those opportunities, but obviously, we can't explore all those opportunities and then say, oh, wait, let's go get permission, so unfortunately, you kind of got to ask permission for first. Um, we are putting together some fees that we feel are reasonable, um, to charge once we get it, but that will also depend on, all right, do we get sixty kids, or do we get a hundred and twenty kids? So we're s- kind of in those things. This is following up with our, our summer youth program, um, TARDIS built a database of all the kids that showed up, so now we're starting to create something so we can send out some emails to get some participation, and we're just trying to do some of these things on Saturday during the day, the under six, under, under tw- under twelve, under ten, under, you know, eight, under six, try to set up some leagues, and that's where we just want permission.
Great.
Move forward.
You're, I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna, you got my support, um, I, you know, I love what the summer camp, uh, did and how it engaged kids and, and, you know, investing in, in youth is, is something that I'm excited to see, you know, you and, you and Mr. Curry interested in doing, uh, uh, through the recreation department, so, uh, you, you definitely have my support. Uh, one question, though, I would have is, I mean, it sounds like you're, you're trying to, to, to gauge maybe what the gap is in, in the community, uh, you're not interested in going and, for example, putting the Little League, the Little Leagues out of business by, by the city is now gonna run Little League Baseball or something, right?
No, not at all.
I mean, you're looking for, wh- where is it that you can add to what's offered to kids, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, and this is why we, I specifically say to Roy Walker Gym, 'cause currently there's no youth programs at Roy Walker Gym, so, it might be, you know, a basketball, it might be a kickball league, it might be, you know, who knows what we, what different options we can come up with, but we'll c- confine it there. Now, at some point in the future, as this becomes successful, we'll look for other gaps, but no, we're not wanting to take over anything from anybody else.
Got it, I appreciate that, and I think the public would appreciate knowing and understanding that, and then I tracked, uh, this discussion at your, your committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, and, uh, it was brought up, uh, like arts and crafts kind of opportunities for youth as well, right? You're exploring those kinds of things?
Yes, um, a- and again, it's, you just gotta put out flyers, and as you get responses and informations, yes, we get twenty kids that want to do something, well, then we can have a class.
That's exciting.
Then we can put some things together.
So exciting, glad, glad to hear that, uh, Commissioners, questions?
I move for approval, think it's a good idea, and something to, to have there, you, more use for the Roy Walker facility.
Okay. Motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Jones, any further discussion or debate? Commissioners, please vote. Uh, Commissioner Porter?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. And the, uh, vote is unanimous, the motion is carried. Mr. Hooper, thank you for...
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you, appreciate ya. All right, next we have reports of boards, officers, and committees, and first up, we have the monthly investment report from our finance director, Ms. Leanne Malonson.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, so this is the first month of our new fiscal year, so we started off the year at fifty-eight point seven million, ending cash of fifty-eight point four million, of course, this was July, which we had our extra third payroll, so that is the majority of the difference in the change in the cash. Brief overview, general fund, Fund One, our ending cash, six point eight million, and then moving on to all of our restricted funds, solid waste, Fund Two, two point eight million, our environmental tax fund, Six, eight point seven million, wastewater fund, Ten, four point six million, our economic development gross receipts, Fund Sixty Four, four point one million, our water quarter percent, Fund Sixty Six, six point four million, capital projects, Fund Eighty Seven, two point six million, our drainage improvements, Fund Eighty Eight, one point seven million, and our American Rescue Plan, Fund Ninety Four, four point seven million. Breakdown of our cash, we have thirty-three million in our local cash, cash and bank, in our local banks, and then twenty-five point three million in the state investment pool, our interest for our local banks was thirty-eight thousand, our state pool was eighteen thousand, our interest went from point nine zero one six last month to one point four six this month, and I have received the interest for next month, and it's almost double the amount that we received this month, so we are continuing on a positive track there. Tax and Rev has until the twentieth to provide reports, so I do not have anything to report on gross receipts or anything on cannabis, they are now saying it could be October or November before they provide us any information from the economists on that, so we continue to wait.
Okay, and so when you say it could be October, um, is that pertaining to the excise amount or the GRT amount on the cannabis?
Everything.
Both?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you for that, any questions for Ms. Malonson? Thank you for your report, appreciate you very much. Next, uh, do we have a report on the Eastern Plains Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting that took place on the tenth?
Commissioner Casaus sits on that board, and she...
And she has had to step away, so, all right, we'll, uh, we will pass on that report, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, Commissioner Garza, uh, sits on that, but he's had to step away, however, Mr. Hoalt can, uh, can share with us a little about P and Z on August first?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, uh, Pro Tem and Commissioners, uh, most of those items were covered this evening on tonight's agenda, so...
The consent agenda was full of the, the zone changes, yeah.
There, one, one topic conversation that was brought up during the meeting was, uh, request for us to review our carport, um, requirements, and so, i- in regards to, uh, currently in the U D O, we require all new carports to be constructed in a manner that, uh, ties architecturally to the existing home, uh, so for example, if you have a pitched roof, you have to have a pitched carport. Uh, the request has been made that we look at that language to allow for flat roof carports, um, that are not necessarily, uh, it, matching with the existing home, so if, if you have a pitched roof, you could have a flat roof, um, and so that is something that, uh, city staff is going to work on drafting that language, uh, to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their next meeting, so, um, that'd happen, be to answer any questions.
That'll be an interesting, uh, discussion to follow, uh, thanks for that, any questions on P and Z? Okay, very good, uh, next, future agenda items, uh, Mr. Hoalt, do you want to share those, and will that, uh, um, loan agreement and intercept agreement pertaining to the, uh, drinking water state revolving loan fund loan, will that be up next, or are we still waiting on information from, uh...
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioners, um, in conversations that I have had with our city's bond counsel, Mr. Chris Muirhead, and he's spoken with, uh, Mr. Richard Virtue, who is, uh, the, uh, bond counsel for the New Mexico Finance Authority, and they agree that the, um, requirement to, to have the pledge ordinance can be separate from the loan closing documents in order to meet the readiness to proceed to items, uh, for that particular loan. Um, so, Mr. Virtue has gone back to the New Mexico Finance Authority, uh, to make sure that they are comfortable with that as well, um, hopefully they are, and so hopefully that can be heard at the next city commission meeting, um, but as soon as I hear back from them, uh, well, certainly that could be a future agenda item for that meeting, so...
Okay.
The attorneys agree, so that's a good start.
That, that's always, yeah, that's always good news. Thanks for that, yeah, appreciate it.
And I don't have any other future agenda items at this time.
Okay, very good, well, um, I did want to mention that, uh, the reason that Commissioner Casaus and, uh, Commissioner Garza have stepped away is that, uh, they're actually doing a proclamation out at the, uh, event center, I believe it is, or out at the fairgrounds, uh, there's a, a musician with a musical group in town, uh, and, um, I don't remember the details, uh, do you?
Mr. Cordova, I believe, uh, Sammy Cordova, but...
Yeah.
That's, I'm sorry, I don't...
There, so, so, uh, we, we were, we were doing a proclamation for an individual, a musician, uh, I believe is from Clovis, uh, very accomplished, uh, happens to be performing this evening, and so we prepared a proclamation, and they've gone out to, to actually deliver that, and so I just wanted to point that out, but perhaps we'll have a post about that where, uh, the public can, can learn more about how we recognize this musician. Um, future, let's see, we covered future agenda items, our upcoming meetings, uh, include, uh, we want to be aware that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September fifth, for Labor Day, um, the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference will take place, uh, August thirtieth, uh, through September second, um, in Albuquerque, the Civil Aviation Board will meet at five thirty on Tuesday, September sixth, uh, here in the North Annex, and please make note, the next city commission meeting will not be on the first Thursday in September, it will instead be on September eighth, the second Thursday in September. With that, we are adjourned, thank you.
I can? Yeah, I was gonna leave it with somebody.
I'm actually gonna...